Testing. You don't hear it?
Going to come out of closed session and return, and return to open session here. I want to thank you everyone for showing up. It's a little, had some snow and that's been fun, I think, for the last few years. We haven't had much in the last couple of years, so it was really nice to see. We want to start off though with the Iredal States Full Schools Board of Education meeting on January 13th, on the open session, we'll start out with a moment of silence. And we'll just start a moment of silence here. So if you would please. Thank you. Next, we have the presentation of colors. And so it looks, it looks like the colors are here, so we're going to do pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Yeah, go ahead. We're going to have Ms. Abby Trent read the mission statement real quick and get us started off in the right direction.
The Iredal States Full Schools Board of Education will provide leadership for a system of schools that enables all students to achieve their academic potential and lead productive and rewarding lives. The Board of Education will achieve this mission through effective policy and decision making utilizing the fundamentals of continuous improvement.
So I think we're finished with our welcome. Dr. Mizell from Personnel, you want to come up for that? I don't think we can ask a whole lot in open session, but. So, hi, Dr. Mizell.
How you doing?
Alright, so any comments that you need to make about the personnel report?
If we entertain any questions that we can, we can in open session.
Okay, do we have any questions in open session about the personnel report?
I have a comment, please.
Go right ahead.
I, I recognize the efforts that you've put into attracting teachers to Ired County and, and I do appreciate it. I see a lot of work and I see a, a lot of progress that you've made this, since you've been in your position and, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan.
Any other comments, question? Alright, so do I have a motion to accept the personnel report?
I make a motion, we approve the personnel report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any comments concerning the motion to approve the personnel report? Okay, since there's no comments, all those in favor of approving the personnel report per the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, seven zero. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. This is for the December 2nd Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes and December 9th Board of Education. It's 2024 Meeting Minutes. So if you want to take your minutes out and look at those. Do we have any general questions for, I guess, myself or Ms. Kelly concerning the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the December 2nd and the December 9th 2024 minutes.
Do I have a second? Have a second by Rhonda Hope. Any discussion concerning the approval of minutes? Anybody want to be recognized, discussed approval of minutes for December 2nd, 2024, December 9th, 2024? This was in your packet, this was what we were given. Ms., go ahead, Mr. Kubinik.
I don't have any issues or concerns with December 2nd. However, with December 9th, if you look on page 10, paragraph D, Roman numeral eight, D, where we were briefed on the Lake Norman High School stadium upgrade. Mr. Schenkerick briefed us on that the total cost was 3.304,290, or 3,304,290,000, which included some lighting upgrades and the minutes don't reflect, reflect that.
So, Mr. Kubinik, are you saying the project cost number is incorrect on that?
That's what I'm saying, Mr. Schenkerick's first memo on December 2nd had, I believe, the content listed here. And then on December 9th, he modified his briefing to us to include lighting upgrades, which added roughly $320,000 to the total cost. So these minutes will need to be updated to reflect, reflect that. No, no worries.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Kubinik. Any other comments concerning the, the minutes on December 2nd or December 9th?
Point of information?
Yes, sir.
So we'll be voting on this to be correct with the assumption that Ms. Kelly's going to think?
That's going to be, I'm hoping someone will make a motion to approve them with making the correction. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm remiss that the, the minutes are also missing the, the results for the personnel report from December 9th as well. Remember, we discussed a training where results of the personnel report are now going to be documented in the meeting minutes? So my point was is, are we going to add it to these minutes?
I'm sorry, I don't think I understand your questioning. And Ms. Kelly, can you?
When we, when we had the training, when we had training, our board attorney stated that when the personnel report is approved, it becomes public record and with the exception of certain confidential information, goes into our meeting minutes. Thus, the meeting minutes in front of us do not reflect those personnel report from December 9th.
So, so what you're saying, Kelly, is it will go in there once this is approved? And the same personnel report was what was given to us on December 9th? Right, so what was given to us on December 9th will go into the public record once these minutes are approved. Does that answer your question, Mr.?
No, sir, I misunderstood then. I thought that when we would be presented the meeting minutes, the personnel report would already be there for us to look at.
I think this was, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what we're saying is the personnel report on December 9th is still valid, that we were given then, and we're assuming that's still valid. It would become public record after these minutes were. Because it would be somewhat redundant giving again.
Okay, fair enough.
Does that make sense?
Fair enough.
Okay, that's my understanding unless, Ms. Kelly, if you have a, something different from that. Because they have not changed since December 9th. So that's just, it's still within, you can still review that per the Assembly.
Right, so, so do we need an amendment to the motion to correct the December 9th meeting minutes?
We're going to have, I'm going to ask for that here in just a minute, sir. Thank you. Alright, so any other comments, anyone who recognized for the minutes? So what I'm going to ask for is a motion to approve the minutes for both December 2nd and December 9th with the adjustment of the numbers for the Lake Norman High School field, with that adjustment per Mr. Schenkerick's numbers. So I'll need to ask for him, if someone can make, once we recognize, make a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the December 2nd and the December 9th minutes with the corrections for the field at Lake Norman High School, the numbers.
Do we have a second for that, for the motion that is taken, that we're going to accept the approval of the minutes with the corrected numbers for the field for Lake Norman High School? Second, second by Mr. Angel, any discussion on the motion?
Discussion, we was going to also make the correction of the personnel being added, wouldn't we?
I think that was an assumption Oz is that it, since it's already there on December 9th, that we're not going to, she wouldn't just add it into the minutes again. That it, it becomes, we just automatically, that just, that's, that's just like staying in, in timeout, waiting for it to get put in public. Okay, alright, does that answer your question, Sloan? Okay, so no more discussion, we'll have a vote. All those approving the minutes on December 9th and December 2nd with the aforementioned changes, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Nay, so it's seven zero. Thank you. So we have approval of consent agenda on here, but I don't see anything on the consent agenda. So, Mr. Superintendent, Dr. Superintendent, is that correct? We just skip right over this? I'm still learning this game of, of being chair.
Yes, sir, basically what you just voted on. We removed the, all the, the school spotlight and all the accolades tonight because of the weather. So yes, so you are done with the non-cons, or the consent agenda, you're moving on.
To the non-consent agenda.
The non-consent, yes, sir.
Let's move on to the non-consent agenda. Alright, so first up, we have approval of Lake Norman High School Denmark trip, Dr. Billy Berry. And I will say on a personal note, I was in Finland seeing my son, and Finland is part of Scandinavia and so is Denmark, and it was, it was really, it was cold. It was really nice over there and it's a beautiful country and culture's very good as well. So go, go right ahead.
Good evening, Chairman Knight and Board of Education. In accordance with Policy 3320, trips outside of the continental United States have to be approved by the Board of Education. So we have Mr. James Cowart and Mr. Martin Kirby, who will discuss their trip to Denmark. We, I think, did this last year as well, but they'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Hey, good evening, Dr. James, Dr. Knight, Board members. Thank you for having us today. It's my honor to present our program to you. We have been doing this Denmark Exchange Program for 15 years. It was established in 2007 and has brought many wonderful experiences to current and former Lake Norman High School students. As part of the program, students host a Danish student for a week in their homes. We go visit Copenhagen, the capital of Denmark. And we stay for a week in Bornholm with a Danish family, where students attend school and work on a project with international business implications and market research to build a lifelong friendship with their Danish student. And many students say this is one of the best things they have done in school. The exchange project is great to put on their resumes, their home stays, they get to expand their horizons. And hosting the Danish student in America is one of the favorite things that families get to enjoy. So I present this to you for approval, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Any questions for us?
Okay, does anyone who may be recognized have questions concerning the speakers? Go ahead, Mr. Sloan.
What's the cost to Iredal States Full Schools?
This is student-funded.
Completely student-funded.
Well, okay, any other, anyone who may be recognized, Ms. Kern?
I remember you guys presenting the same thing last year and I'm just disappointed we didn't get pictures. Maybe next time we can have some few pictures so we could see all the fun they're having.
Sounds like a plan. I'll, I'll put that on his list, he can get you a photo album when we get back.
Anyone else? My only question was, you say they're doing a project concerning international business?
Yes, sir, we partnered with FBLA last year. I told you guys, I was trying to make this more than just a one-year trip. So the Future Business Leaders Club, we've, almost everyone going is in the club and they're trying to study some businesses. Some of the parents of the Danish students are local business owners. One is a parliamentarian there and we're going to go visit parliament. And they're going to just examine some differences between American business and Danish business.
Which I, I personally think is very interesting because my son that is in Finland is working on a masters in international business. Actually, an English language program made for, the program's made for people from, it's an international program made for people that are not from Finland. And so it's a very similar type thing and, yeah, he's, it's a lot of work. But it's, it's definitely something enjoyable and he really enjoys it. I think what you're just doing is great. Any other comments, anyone else? I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the Lake Norman High School Denmark trip.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Hope. Any other comments, questions, or concerns concerning the Denmark trip for Lake Norman High School? All those in favor of the motion for approving the Lake Norman trip to Denmark, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You're going to Denmark.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have budget amendments by Mr. Adam Steele and Ms. Maggie Becker. Or Ms. Maggie Becker.
I think it went off, yep, just Maggie Becker tonight. Good evening, Chairman Knight, Board, and Dr. James. We are asking for approval for the budget amendments that were presented last week.
Okay, so we had a discussion on those, pretty decent discussion on the budget amendments from last week. Does anyone have any discussion concerning the budget for Ms. Becker? Will be recognized for that. Ms. Kern?
I don't, I don't have any questions on the amendment per se, but a budget question I had was if we had some funding for some teacher, teacher training that we can go to to help improve our low-performing schools and if we can get the administration of our low-performing schools to some sort of training over the summer for next year to get a launch on that.
I don't, I will, go ahead.
I think Ms. Cooper or Mr. Ribic can speak to that, but as being part of low-performing, there is a plethora of workshops we have to attend, we're not asked, we're told. It's an ongoing process, so if you're, if you're designated low-performing, the state basically says, here's what you're going to do. If we chose not to do it, you as a board would hear it and then we would have other issues.
Yeah, I think that may, that question may be better within the, the low-performing school segment of it. Mr. Kubinik, you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is for the question for the superintendent. I think you previously stated that with our attendance numbers, the state needed to provide us additional funds and I think you said that came through. Could you remind us how much that additional funds is and where it's going to go, what it's going for?
Yes, and be glad to educate the board and the public. And sometimes it feels like we're in a game in education, but it's always something being changed. Whether it be tests being re-normed, if our performance goes up a certain percentage statewide, then we decide it's time to re-norm the test. So the state was funding us on projections until last year. The state decided us, decided at that time not to fund us on projections, projections, projected student growth. Well, for districts that are growing, that's pretty detrimental because you, you don't get your money upfront. We can't really hire a teacher based on, we think we're going to get the money. So our enrollment is up 297 students, which comes out to right at roughly $1.7 million. That is from the state. Typically, the county funds one time, so we, we won't anticipate any additional county funding. So for those 297 students, we're just getting state, the state portion of funding, which if you look at Iredal County continues to be 98th or 99th percentile out of 100 counties. So the state, the state dollars are 67% of our budget. So we are at the very bottom when it comes to drawing down state funding and we could have a, a two-day workshop on the whys and the hows and, but I think at the bottom of the day, it, it behooves us to understand that we're a tier-three county and what I get when I complain for the state is your, your county has the wherewithal to raise taxes and they choose not to. The state does have an obligation to a point, but also the county has an obligation to fund. So not, not throwing off on any commissioners, I'm just telling you the facts. So I lived here all my life and appreciate low taxes. But again, we, this board's been saying it and we've been saying it for four or five years now, six years, that there is a cost to not receiving funding. Esters was a great thing, we made a lot of strides, Esters is gone. So the, the shot in the arm for the 1.7 million is great. We're not going to run out and hire 20 or 30 teachers because we're already in the hole. So we place teachers just where we have to. We are mandated K3 on certain class sizes, we have to maintain. So just think about it, the state requires us to maintain a class size and if those positions were open in K3, we'd be violating the law because of lack of funding. So the state did come through with the funding, thanks to our, our group in Nor, in Ired County, the North Carolina Legislature. They definitely rallied for us to get those additional funds. It did come with some other things that we probably didn't care for as a public school system, but that's okay. We need money to operate. So yes, that, that definitely helped us sure up the deficit that we were projecting, Mr. Kubinik, of about 2.3 million.
And this is what you're talking about under budget amendments? This would be the state budget increase of 2.944?
Yes, but there's some other money they sure up. So as Adam told you last month, this is the time to sure up, some of the things were owed and not owed. And Maggie could speak volumes on the way we've changed the state accounting system. We used to be able to sort of float some things on our behalf, but now we have to almost be exact with our payroll. And it's not easy when you get paid, when part of your salary is federal, part of your salary is state, part of your salary is local. And there is no automatic program out there, you can push a button and come up with a number. So we have to hand generate a, a lot of positions, especially when we use federal Title I dollars. And there's forms we have to fill out each month to provide to the federal government that we're following their criteria when we do that. So the payroll is very complicated and I can tell you, coming in myself, seven days a week, sometimes, that our payroll department, there's always somebody there when I come in, whether it's Saturday, Sunday, always somebody in payroll because it's so intricate trying to get our payroll out on time.
Alrighty, so Mr. Kubinik, do you have any other questions? Alright, any other questions for Ms. Becker on this? This is a voting item, so I will ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion, we approve.
Second.
There's been a motion that we, and a second that we approve the budget amendments per presented by Mr. Adam Steele and Ms. Maggie Becker. Do I have any questions, comments on that? Anyone who may be recognized for that? Okay, so hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of the budget amendments as presented by Mr. Steele and Ms. Becker, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero, thank you, thank you. Next, we have the restart plan approval by, and Mr. Ribic and Ms. Cooper. And we want to, we kind of had a, we had a good discussion on this at the Cal meeting and we want to keep this discussion here on the approval of the four schools. So if you want to do a quick summary on that. So, if you want to do a quick summary on that for the board and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Knight, board members. Dr. James, last week at the committee of the whole, we presented about our restart plan. And that is to apply, to have Statesville High, Third Creek Middle, and Troutman Middle to remain as restart. And then add West Iredal High School as a new restart school. There was a question I want, do want to clear up, that MB Mills is currently restart and will remain restart. They just do not have to reapply because they met certain targets during the year. So, once again, we are asking, and we do need board approval to reapply for these schools. And we are asking for that this evening.
Does anyone want to be recognized for questions concerning these four schools and the restart application for Ms. Cooper and Mr. Ribic? Brian? Okay, Brian, Mr. Sloan, go ahead.
Mr. Ribic, do you feel personally this is, this is a good thing for our schools?
It is. It gives them, as we stated last week, the charter-like flexibility. For example, like MB Mills can have a calendar that's different than the other schools because of this flexibility. They have flexibility with staffing. They have flexibility with how they can use their funds. There is a misconception out there that we get restart money. We do not get more funds for restart, but we can use it differently. It all goes into one pot rather than other schools that aren't restart. You have to keep this money in this section, this money in this section. These schools get to just one pot and they can use it differently. So, it helps them to, to be flexible. And I'll let Ms. Cooper add to that.
Well, and it helps them if they need to hire tutors to come in and work with students. That was one of the reasons why we wanted to add West Iredal High School. It's not that West Iredal High School has all of a sudden had a complete downturn. It's the fact that they have met, or they have not met progress in the last several years. And this will allow us to be able to utilize that funding to bring in tutors and some of the things that they currently can't pay for. So, it's to help them be able to purchase what they know they need to improve the school. And the person that, the people that are the experts on what that school needs are the people who are working in those schools.
And we've also asked the principals, they have to be on board with this. And they all can, want to continue the schools that already are. And then West Iredal High School has, Mr. Johnson has said that he would like to be one as well.
And there will be accountability on it?
There has to be. We have, we, they, actually, our restart schools just had to submit a report to the state. We have to do a district report where we get together and talk about how are we supporting our restart schools? And then restart schools have to put together a report that gets to the state, which all must be approved for them to continue.
They also have monthly meetings, restart meetings with the state that they have to attend. We have district leadership teams that we have to attend. So, it increases the knowledge base that they have because they have access to other schools throughout the state who are also in that restart category. And it brings in the specialists who are there to be able to help with those turnaround schools.
And they also must work with us on their plans. They must be approved by our executive team. So, they can't just do whatever they want to do. It has to be in collaboration with us.
And the state?
Improvement plans are also reviewed by the state and given feedback by the state, not just us.
Yes, those plans just aren't submitted to the state. So, I get emails from the state asking questions, you know, what about this? What are you doing here? So, there's multiple eyes as, as funding allows above us for restart. And I'll stop there.
Ms. Sloan, you're good. Anyone else want to be recognized? Ms. Kern?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you. I am, I'm concerned about the, the plans and basically, do we get a presentation of those or a copy of those so that we can like review that plan? And do we also get updates, regular updates on this as they're a restart school?
You get their, you have to approve their school improvement plans, which basically is their plan for improvement. And that's approved by you all each year.
So, so the last one that we got when we approved that, that, that is their plan, it's not another plan?
Correct, which must be approved by the board each year. And once again, that is submitted to the state for their approval, for restart schools for their approval as well.
And then what about like some updates, periodic updates? Is, is there some type of presentation to the board on a quarterly basis or?
That would be up to Dr. James and Chairman Knight, how they'd want to go about that.
Well, we do a year-end review and prior COVID, we done a mid-year review. So, we're more than happy to do a mid-year review. The problem with the state is all the data is after the fact. It's not formative, but we do have formative data like in K3 reading, we have M-class. So, we monitor that constantly. We do have some I-ready reports that we look at frequently to determine are we moving forward or not. So, there are some data points, yes, that our schools sit down and look at. So, every week our schools are required to do a PLC, professional learning community. And there's some principals here and they can speak to this. But there, that has a, a direct agenda in what they're required to do. And they document the conversations on what they're doing to close gaps. So, that, that has been going on. And I'll just be honest with you, with a lot of, I think a lot of the reasons that teachers leave it, they have the assumption, I'll walk in, close my door and teach. It doesn't work that way in teaching anymore because of all the other things we deal with. So, and even in state law, it's required that you have collaborative planning. So, we do that to make sure we're discussing data. So, both of us happen to be math teachers in the same grade level, if a school has that many. Then we discuss, constantly discuss our data, what I've done, where my kids' place versus your kids', how do we adjust that? But it's an ongoing, continuous improvement process.
I'm, I'm, I understand that funding is one of the attributes of helping the situation. And I'm not discounting funding, but since we're having challenges with receiving funding, what are, what are some plans for getting out of this that you haven't done before? Maybe a, a new, a new idea, new plans that you're choosing to do for this, this time around?
Okay, so, when the initial restart plans were written, we were with, we had different principals at the time. So, every time that you get a different group of principals, they're going to come in with different ideas. I know this group, they're very interested in the tutoring models because we saw it work. When we were allowed to do the tutoring model at North Iredal Middle School last year and at Third Creek Elementary School, we saw tremendous gains. With the, with ESRS going away, we were not allowed to expand that. We couldn't expand that program. These folks would like to be able to have tutors in their schools and to be able to utilize them. I will say at Third Creek Middle this year in particular, she does have a few tutors who are working with math. And we just celebrated last week in PLCs. We met with their math department. We met with their ELA department. And we were looking at their mid-year data and their math scores. They've grown kids by 12 percentage points in seventh grade and sixth grade math with these, with a combination of a highly qualified teacher and the tutors working collaboratively. So, the things they're doing are working, is it working exponentially? To be able to get a kid who's working on a second or third grade level up to a sixth grade level by the end of the year, probably not. But it is growing kids and we've got the data to support that. So, they'll be working with their teams to continue to improve those processes that we know that work because we are looking at research.
And I'll say for MB Mills, which is my school on here, they're, it's working there. You can, you've seen their data. They don't have to reapply. It's the, you know, the calendar. They want to continue that and continue the work that they've been doing.
One of the things I learned when I went to Greensboro was they had the Global Scholars Program, After School Program, and the Math Academy. One of the concerns they had was addressing transportation. Do we have a challenge with transportation with having these kids in these tutor programs?
We do. We do. And there's just not extra funding for those types of things.
So, we do bus MB Mills and you'll have to tell me the other schools that we bus. But we bus them to Boys and Girls Club. Prior, yeah, around 2020, 21, it was about 600 students. And I just met with that group on the radio the other day and it's only about 260 or 270. So, not every parent's taking advantage of that. So, they actually get to, if you, if you allow us to transport your child to Boys and Girls Club, they're there. You can pick them up at 6:30. They do tutoring support, which is typically, they hire a few of our teachers to go there and supply that. They also get a meal. But of course, it's, it's, the parents have to opt in to do that. So, we did start a Boys and Girls Club on site at Shepherd. And then we're starting Abby Trent Girls Club at Fort, Abby, Abby Smart, sorry, Abby Trent. Sorry, Abby, I was, I was committing you to a couple million there, sorry. Abby Smart, which is a family that has committed quite a bit of money to a program for girls. We do girls, not girls, Smart, what is it we do? It's not Girls on the Run.
What, Girls on the Run?
Not Girls on the Run. What's the other one we do with the church-based, faith-based group? True, not Truth Girls, there's another one. Comes out of Western, yeah, it comes out of Western Baptist. Do what? Good News Club. Good News Club is that? Good News Club, so we are touching a large portion. And all these, all these clubs tend to, it's hard to keep up with all of them because there's quite a few. But I'm going to tell you, when ESRS money went out, there's quite a few that we had proven data that impacted our kids. We have no money to, to use them. And the frustrating thing, Union County does several things very well. And we're partners with them, so we, we've went there and took 30, 40 people. And the frustration for us is we come back and start something that's working. And when the funding runs out, that's the end of the program, even though it's working. So, that's the quagmire of being funded at the very bottom as, as a district. Again, 67% of our funding is state. We're, we're at 99th or 98th every year with state funding. That does take a toll. And we're not taught, you know, we're 21,000 students. Only $300 or $400 of students and ends up being 10 or 12 million dollars additional funding you have to put towards closing the gap. So, and unfortunately statewide, based on the current model we have, 99 of the school districts of last, 2023, ending 2023, 2024, 99 school systems had low-performing schools out of, out of 115. And then I pulled trend data. There's some, there's some years 103 or 105. I could go into a whole diatribe about how we're wasting a lot of taxpayer dollars to accomplish something virtually impossible at some schools. But that's the model we have and until legislators change it. The biggest oxymoron, in my opinion, is an at-risk school has to exceed growth. If they could exceed growth, they wouldn't be an at-risk school. Exceeding growth is not only hitting a home run, it's hitting it on beyond the park, the lights out into the parking lot. That's not going to happen with the current funding we have. Can it happen? If the funds were put there to do it, I, I think so. I think our people would give it 100% shot in the arm. But again, we chose not to pay teachers. We're 48th out of 50 in the nation. So, we're, it's hard to attract people to the teaching profession. And you've heard from Personnel Department that about 55% of our teachers right now are not the traditional pathway. And I would tell you that, that does help to have a traditional educated teacher in a classroom. If you have a highly qualified teacher, it's the biggest impact of anything we do.
I think you had one more question.
Yeah, one last question. One of the things that they recommended, this was Wayne County. They said that they were very intentional on putting their plan out in the community and partnering with the community. So, how can the community, community find your plan for, for their restart school?
All of our school improvement plans are online. They go to our website and they can view any of our schools' plans, every single one of them there. And they can, best way to do it honestly, though, is to reach out to the school and the principal and say, what do you need? That's really the best way to do it unless you have something.
We do have a foundation, ISS Foundation. We were trying to, and it's several hundred thousand dollars. Jada manages it or looks at it for me. She's my designee. I haven't checked on what's in there lately. But the goal there was try to get it up to us, to enough that it would be self-sustaining with interest. We could take that interest and offer it out for grants, sort of like Energy United does. So, a lot of our agencies offer many grants that, you know, if you, if you want to apply for them, you get certain things to accomplish. But I just be, John said, if we can have churches go in in K3 to K5, you, you definitely don't have to be a complete expert. We can help train you pretty quickly, but it makes an impact to do small group instruction with kids on reading. And, and I will say that Iredal County was second probably in the state. It was in the second cohort, but we started on letters training, which is some of the best reading interventions we have found in the history of a school system. And it's based on research and it's making a difference and we see that in our numbers. But again, we'll, we'll talk more on the 27th about why the model's not going to show those numbers.
We've done the exact same thing because we saw the success with letters. And we knew that Kathy Truitt was looking at doing Lexia Aspire Training, which is the secondary version. So, our teachers in those schools are going through the Lexia Aspire Training, which is the secondary component on how to teach a child in the secondary level, how to read if they can't read by the time that we get them.
And we, one of the things they said was that Jim, Jim Knight, they sent their, their staff to his district instructional coaching.
We've done that here. All of our coaches, all of our instructional coaches have been through Jim Knight.
And they've been there? Okay, very good. That was one of the things they said was very successful. Good.
Been through it.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other, I have a comment here in a minute, but Mr. Kubin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Ribic and Ms. Cooper, so if we approve your recommendation today to add West Iredal High to Troutman Middle, Third Creek Middle, Statesville High, and MB Mills, then we'll have five restart schools. And, and I support that program. And with, and Mr. Ribic, we've had some separate conversations. And I think you know within my heart that I've been talking about low-performing schools for three years. And we should implement all solutions, any ideas to turn around our schools. Now, this is not a gotcha question, but if we have 13 low-performing schools and we're putting five in restart, why wouldn't we want all our schools to be restart? Why wouldn't we want all 13 schools to be on a year-round schedule? Why wouldn't we do those things and even more?
Johnson?
Just, this is for, really for my own knowledge. This is not a gotcha question.
I can take that one for you.
Why wouldn't we be doing these things to, to turn around our, our schools?
So, we have 13, but you can be a, based on the state formula, you can be low-performing today and come out next year. So, we only, so we're putting all the resource, well, not all of the resources, the, the crumbs that we get from the state table, we put to four schools that are persistently low-performing. So, we put all the resources we can there because you can be a school that goes on because of one year of data, you can go on low performing and the next year you could come off. That, and if we need jerk to that, then we're not going to improve anything. Because if you look at the schools, even with the board and myself, I cannot do anything when it comes to accountability unless a school's been, been low-performing for three years. Then it gives the board and I the option to close a school, to remove the principal. But if the principal's on contract, you have to move him somewhere else or pay their contract out. And you can't move him to another low-performing school. Or you can leave the principal at the school but put him on an action plan. Or you can fire 50% of the staff. So, Kelly and I have been around long enough to see firing the complete staff twice. And there's tons of research that say, certain demographics, based on the current state model North Carolina uses, you can fire staffs till the cows jump over the moon. There's still going to be low-performing schools based on our model. So, we target the four low-performing schools. And if we have a school, because this October, the board asked me why, and burnout's an issue too. These schools, these four consistently low-performing schools, the turnover is twice as much as anywhere else because you get burnt out. You take on, when that, when those kids come in with all the baggage they come in with, being in poverty, you sort of take that on as a teacher like you would a parent. And eventually, it impacts you. So, Marsha Carrick, I think the board would agree, is probably one of our better performing principals. And, you know, I've had to talk to Mark on a personal conversation about, you know, hey, let's, let's get it back together. Let's, let's move forward and talk him off the ledge because it's one of the hardest things you'll ever do in your career. And, and think about this. So, our state model would say, hey, Mark, you're doing great where you're at. We'll pay you $30,000 additional dollars for three years to turn around a, a low-performing, persistently low-performing school. to turn around a, a low-performing, persistently low-performing school. Well, if Mark stays at that school for three years and doesn't turn it around, Mark now has hurt his career, because he's going to be deemed a low-performing principal. And if he, if he goes out and applies to other districts, I can assure you, if he's a low-performing principal, he's probably not going to get any job offers. So i- if the legislator would sit down and talk to educators, we could, we could take the current model we have, without throwing the baby out with the bathwater, and tweak it a little bit. And all the research says it takes about five years to turn a school around. So if we could hold a principal harmless, then we could probably get some of our best teachers and best principals, and we've even done that here, and we pay our teachers with Esters, five thousand dollar stipends plus, and still could not fill positions at our persistently low-performing schools, even paying them additional money.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to conclude my remarks, it, this is not about blowing up the system and firing people. This is not what I'm talking about. But if we, of the thirteen low-performing schools, eleven are continually low-performing, and, and way more than five have had low-performing designation for the last three years. So if, if we're only going to designate five with restart, and only one of those is a year-round schedule, and we're not doing other things, then what's Plan B? And I'm not sure I hear a good Plan B for eight schools that we're not even talking about tonight. So I believe we have to have continued discussions and focus on this, not to have meetings for meeting's sake, but if we're not putting focus on it, the work is not going to get done to turn around these schools. And that's my biggest concern.
I would agree with you, and if we could put a highly qualified teacher in every classroom in this county, we wouldn't be talking about low-performing schools.
Let me, let me finish up. All right, Mr. Cooper, anyone else's comments? I'll make a comment, I think Mr. Sloan may also make a comment.
I do want to say one other thing.
Go ahead.
That for Ms. Kern and Mr. Cooper, we are going to other places, we are going to other districts, as we mentioned last week. I've visited other counties, I've visited other schools. I'll go anywhere and anywhere that we can to, if a school or a district is seeing success in any certain areas. So that does happen. I just did it last month, just did a visit to a school with, brought a team. We have some great strategies we brought back, share with our teams as well. So that is something we, we do want to do and continue to do.
Ms. Cooper, okay. Um, now, what I want to say is, I, before I grew up and became an adult, I guess, in my twenties, I was a tutor, I taught, I tutored, uh, high school math, geometry, algebra, Algebra II, all those things. Um, it works. I saw it. Parents would pay me very good money to do it, and I had institutions. Um, I tutored at group homes, math, and because they, these kids, these kids needed it. And me coming in for an hour twice a week, just that made a difference in raising, raising scores and getting their kids' grades from F to a D or F to a C or so. Um, the tutoring matters, and that monetary flexibility. And, you know, West Iroh is on its way up, but I think it needs some help. I've been very impressed personally over there, but it, and I think this is what this restart designation will give them that flexibility to apply some more novel solutions and ways they can get things done they normally can't. And that's why I'm very much for West Iroh adding it to a restart program. Mr. Sloan?
Yes, every, everybody you talk to, they always say it's about the kids. And it seems like tutoring is, it comes up a lot, and it seems like it's the best thing for the low-performing schools and the kids. So my questions would be if individuals or businesses or even organizations wanted to sponsor a tutor or donate towards a tutor, who would they contact for that? Because that looks like that would be a great idea, especially for business.
The school can tell them what kind of tutoring they need and what specific area they need it.
So they could donate the money and it would go a hundred percent straight to tutor?
Or people, if they could find people to do it, too. Because that's one thing we also struggle with, they're not, tutors just aren't out there for anybody to find. I mean, some schools couldn't do full tutoring programs because they couldn't find enough people to do it. That's another thing that, because the hours, it's hard for some people to work just those certain hours.
So, Dr. Knight, so one of the things I know that our, our group of legislators are looking at recommending is the, the rehire.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the, I, I love our state treasurer, the retiring Mr. Falwell. He's done great things, but he was adamant that we were not going to be allowed to rehire teachers. We have a ton.
Yes.
Of retired teachers that if we do not penalize their retirement, would come back. And so I have talked to several legislators that are wanting to do that. There were even other states around us doing that, and some states allowed you to pay the retirement penalty. I even talked to Mr. Falwell myself and said, we will pay the penalty. We need qualified teachers in our classroom. And he was just adamant he wasn't going to do it for our state retirement plan. The impact it makes, um, he'll tell you is significant. Other states would tell you it's not. Um, so if we could do that, it would open up a whole pool of tutors that would definitely retire, would come back and tutor for us. Um, so there, there's, there's quite a, quite a few things, and then I would not disagree with Mike, but it's sort of like you have limited resources, work on your biggest problem first. And then there are some schools that I think the, the administration feels like shouldn't be in low performing. So there's some other things we're doing. And then if we come to you and say, we need to put them there, I think we have exhausted everything we have. Um, and, you know, we have date on principal turnover, you know, you don't want to do, and you, you did say that's not what it's about, but every time we have a principal retire, it, the school will typically go stale or go backwards until that principal's in there a year or two. And the same thing with teacher turnover, and you guys said it tonight. Uh, retention's one of our most important things, because it, it takes us drastically backwards when we lose a teacher.
I think everyone has had a chance to comment, this is a voting item, so I ask for a motion concerning this.
I'll make the motion, we approve.
Second.
Second.
It's been a second, uh, on the motion that we approved, the restart plan approval as presented by Mr. Ribic and Ms. Cooper. Uh, vote on this, any discussion, any more discussion on the motion? No discussion on the motion? All those, um, to, that agree that we should approve the restart plan approval motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Seven, zero, thank you. Okay. Next, we have approval of Statesville High School ramp modification. And Mr. Shinkurik talked about this at the, um, Cal meeting, we talked about it a little bit. So if having, we'll do any initial questions, any additional questions for anyone? And again, this is a voting item as well, so. Mr. Shinkurik, any changes?
No, no changes.
Okay, so any questions for Mr. Shinkurik? Anyone we recognized?
I did, yes, thank you. Um, I just had some questions from the public that didn't understand why a ramp would cost so much. Can you explain that?
Well, anything at Statesville High School is, always carries a little bit, why don't you say, a little bit, a lot more money, um, due to it's on a floodplain there and free Nancy. So anything that we do there requires additional stabilization and, um, engineering that goes into, to the work there, and not to even mention, you know, the cost of construction and escalated costs that we're seeing right now. We're really encountering this in every project that we put out to bid.
And I also think that some people have in their mind that this is like a little handicap ramp. This is something much larger, correct? Can you elaborate on that for just a minute?
Yes, I could, um, probably pull from the plans there, and we put them as an attachment. But you could see they're pretty significant, um, thing that we're doing there. It's, the concession stand and bathrooms there are elevated due to being on a floodplain there. So it's a, a significant structure there that goes there. And like I said, we took three, we had, you know, took it out to bid and multiple, multiple GCs bid on it. So, um, they were all around the same cost.
So Mr. Shinkurik, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'd like to, to jump in here.
Yes, sir.
So absolutely, um, the public probably thinks it's just a small set of stairs going up, but I'm thinking the code is probably, they're either sixteen or twenty-foot wide. So it's not just a simple stairway that's four or five foot wide. So when we build something because of the codes, it has to be, whatever the capacity of the stadium is, it has to be built to handle that capacity. It's probably in the plans how wide it is, I didn't see it.
Yeah, the, yes, the staircase is remaining, the, it's the ramp piece that's there, but yeah, it's, Dr. James is correct, it's all has to be, um, in compliance with code and, um, and.
Mr. Sloan?
It's seven foot four inches wide.
Seven foot four inches wide, but there's also a length to it and a grade angle.
Yes, and when that school, when that, when that was built, for whatever reason, we didn't put access to the bathrooms. And so to get to the restrooms, if you're ever there on a Friday night football game, you, you basically have to go through the crowd that's waiting in line, and we have to place additional law enforcement officers in that area to prevent any altercations, uh, because it does get aggravating with the plethora of people coming by while you're trying to wait in line for food. So it was, it should have, should have been included up front. Um, that's, that's a different story, too, but it wasn't. So we're trying to rectify something that should have been done, and it would have cost less than a hundred and some thousand.
Roughly thirty-five feet long.
Thirty-five feet long, okay. Um, any other, uh, comments or questions for Mr. Shinkurik concerning the ramp? Okay, um, this is a voting item, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the ramp modification at Statesville High School.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Hoak. Any comments, yea or nay, per the motion for approval of Statesville High School ramp modification? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Statesville High School ramp modification as presented by Mr. Shinkurik, per the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We have none, seven, zero, thank you, Mr. Shinkurik.
Thank you.
And next, we have approval of new elementary school name, and I hope you have looked into the mascot as we discussed at the Cal. I am joking, that is, that, that's, I am joking, of course, but I'm sorry, go right ahead. Any, anything extra you want to say about the, uh, new elementary school name? You want to do, just a quick synopsis?
Yes, yeah, we, um, we're, we're moving along with this project. We had a, a meeting the other day, um, to, um, look at our process for a construction manager at risk. Um, having a, a name on it would, um, would hopefully, um, is, is kind of the appropriate stage in the, the process right now to do that and, and help us with planning and programming stages. The name was selected in accordance to Board Policy ninety-three hundred of naming facilities.
All right. So any comments or questions for Mr. Shinkurik? Anyone we recognize to discuss it with him? We're all good. This is a voting item as well, so do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the Parker Town name for the new elementary.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the new name for Parker Town Elementary as, as the new name for it? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Sloan. Any discussion concerning the name Parker Town Elementary School for the new elementary school? Any discussion? No discussion seen, so we'll have a, a vote. Um, all those that, uh, want to approve the motion for naming the new elementary school, Parker Town Elementary, as discussed by Ms. Kern, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Seven, zero, thank you, Mr. Shinkurik. Now, next, we have, um, some policies, proposed policies. Is this for first reading or second reading? This is first reading. So this is not a voting item, so we, we talked a little bit about these at the Cal. Uh, there was some discussion, and so we'll start off with, uh, Dr. Jeff James, remote participation in board meetings.
So just quickly, as you remember, due to COVID protocols, um, we had to do remote meetings, so the law had to be changed to permit that to occur. So those were sort of kind of still in place. And then if you look at the bottom of the policy, a lawsuit, uh, that changed, uh, there's general statutes also, but Cannon versus Anson County. This was, uh, my understanding from Mr. Shatley last week, Attorney Shatley, that, uh, this was county commissioners, and there was a vote made, and so not, there wasn't a maj, I think there wasn't a majority in, present, but they were individuals online and a vote was made. And so, uh, of course, the courts got involved, and they, they basically have said, the general statute allowing for remote board meetings, uh, you can attend remotely, but you cannot vote as a school board member. So for your vote, uh, to count on anything, you have to be present. And, um, it's, it's got all the revisions in it based upon the lawsuit and the North Carolina School Board Association.
Okay, so we had some discussion there. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Dr. James? Or comments on this, uh, policy twenty-three oh-two for Dr. James? When we recognize, discuss it?
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cooper.
So, uh, Superintendent, on, um, page five, paragraph four, it says that, this is the, in the context of a remote meeting, it says that instant messages, texts, or other written communications between members of the board regarding transaction, transaction at a board business during a meeting, including communications between among members participating remotely are a public record. Certainly, I don't advocate texting or, uh, during a board meeting, but I certainly agree that that's public record. Does this paragraph apply during meetings where there are no, uh, remote participants? For example, let's just say a board member, we're discussing a policy and texted a former principal and got their opinion on the issue or whatever. So would that be a public record?
Yeah, well, Dean's on the call, but he can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of this law is yes. So anytime you're conducting public business, uh, with anyone, it, it becomes a record. And of course, as you're well aware, and this board is, is, uh, we have a plethora of public information requests. Even my text and all, I have to submit to Jada if someone asks for them, but yes. Uh, so anything that goes on up here or in, in a meeting whatsoever, if it's not just cursory stuff, but I mean, the person can ask for it, and a lot of times it's just a note, say, hey, let's take a break, or, but if I, you reach out, if I'm on, if you're a board member on remote and you're reaching out to people to get their opinion to influence your vote, in my opinion, it becomes public record. Now, getting those records, uh, is, is another thing.
So then you're suggesting it is not a good practice to do that sort of.
No.
Say, for example, or even a phone call during a break during the middle of a board meeting?
Yes, and you know, I'll, of course, tonight, you know what's happening. I'm getting texts from principals, go, what are we doing tomorrow? And I'm like, we haven't made a decision yet. So, you know, that's public record. So if anybody wanted to see them, I'd say, well, here's, here's what I was texted tonight. And you try not to answer those, uh, and so while everybody's watching, we will make a decision by nine o'clock tonight.
I think that is off-the-agenda item, so we're going to try to stay on the agenda on the policy. All right, anyone else have any comments or questions for Dr. James concerning policy twenty-three oh-two, remote participation in board meetings? Hearing none, um, reminder, this will be on next month's agenda for second reading, and assuming there are no issues, uh, going forward, um, it will hopefully, it will become policy if voted then. I'm not going to bias it either way. Um, next is, uh, I guess Ms. Becker concerning policy sixty-four thirty, policy sixty-four fifty, and policy eighty-three oh-five, federal grant administration.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll recall, those are just corrections in text in the document, so minor, minor correction.
And I was also, I almost forgot, policy ninety-one twenty-five, participation by minority businesses. So those are the four, we discussed them last time, Mr. Steele discussed them, uh, discussed them then. Um, does anyone want to be recognized for any questions or comments concerning these four policies for Ms. Becker? Hearing and seeing none, I have none, so thank you very much, Ms. Becker. Okay, next, uh, Dr. Shayla Savage, you'll be discussing policy forty-three twenty and policy forty-three twenty-nine slash seventy-three eleven, tobacco products and bullying harassing behavior prohibited. So, Dr. Savage? And again, we discussed these last time. At the, at the Cal meetings.
Good evening. Um, we did discuss these last, um, week at the Cal meeting. Um, the first one is policy four-three-two-zero, tobacco products, where they're aligning definition of tobacco. Um, Ms. Cooper, you did ask me a question last week, too, about vapes and tobacco and what those numbers look like. Um, last year this time, we had two-hundred-and-forty-two incidences. This year, we have a hundred-and-seventy-one as it relates to tobacco and vaping.
Okay, does anyone have any comments or questions? When we recognize for Dr. Savage concerning policy forty-three twenty? Ms. Kern?
Um, yeah, I just didn't realize there was so many definitions for nicotine. It's pretty amazing, huh?
It comes in all different types, shapes, and forms.
Yes, it does now, doesn't it? Yeah, there's a big progression on that. But thank you for this policy change. I think it'll be good for parents and students to have the exact definition of each type. Thank you.
Anyone else want to be recognized? Okay, I think we're good on policy 4320. Policy 4329/7311, bullying and harassment, harassing behavior prohibited. Does any of the board members, or Dr. Savage, you want to say anything about that before?
This is, just changes because it applies to students and staff. All buildings, as I stated last week, do not have a principal, so you would have a site supervisor at that building. So that's what this policy, that's the change.
All right, thank you. Does any board members want to be recognized for questions or comments to Dr. Savage concerning this policy? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Savage. Again, all these policies will be at second reading next month, and we'll go to a vote, assuming there's no, nothing that stops it from occurring next month. So lastly, we added to the agenda Title IX ruling discussion. This is for the, our in-house attorney. There was a ruling concerning Title IX, and I think we asked our lawyer to discuss it a little bit, and he gratefully said he would, so I don't know, Jada, are we good? Okay, so Dean, you're on. Dean, talk, please. Hello? Okay, you're working on it. There it is. Earth to the Dean.
I'm talking.
No, you're not.
Can't hear me?
All right, go ahead, sir. We can hear you now.
Oh, good, great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, and board members, thank you. Sorry about that. Don't know if that was on my end or what. So on Thursday, January 9th, the Federal District Court in Eastern Kentucky entered a order having a real substantial impact on the 2024 Title IX regulations that went into effect on August the 1st of 2024. Basically, the court entered what's called a vacator, or otherwise known as it vacated the entire rule for all colleges, schools, universities, so anybody K-12, higher ed, that Title IX is applicable to, which we are, and so it vacated the rule, meaning that the rule is no longer in effect. And so we would revert back to the 2020 regulations, or our policies that are in place, that are in compliance with the 2020 regulations. Now, a couple things. One, you'll remember that one of, there were several pieces of litigation that went on over Title IX throughout the summer and the fall. One of those impacted some schools in North Carolina that had members of a couple different organizations, or the children of members of another organization, Moms for Liberty specifically. And so a lot of our schools were impacted by that. A majority of our schools were impacted by that because there were members of those two student organizations, or children of members of Moms for Liberty. And so at that time, the board chose not to adopt any type of additional policy, since a majority of our schools were impacted by that order. But that order was temporary. That was just a temporary stay. The order that was issued by the Eastern Kentucky Federal Court, though, is a permanent order. It may be appealed by the Department of Education. However, I think with the impending change of presidential administrations, that is unlikely, excuse me, that is highly unlikely that it will be appealed. And so at this point in time, we are, there's really nothing for you all to do, because you didn't change your policies and procedures previously. So you still have in policies that are compliant with the 2020 regs, and the 2020 regs are now basically still in effect. So that's just a little bit of an update for you all. I don't necessarily think there's any action for you to take at this time. We'll certainly see if there's any additional changes as the new administration comes in, and we have new leadership in the Department of Ed as well. So happy to answer any questions on that, if you all have any.
Do any of the board members have questions for the lawyer concerning the Title IX ruling? Want to be recognized? Go ahead.
It seems, it seems to me like level or hate, Moms for Liberty saved us a lot of trouble. Would that be the fact?
Well, interesting, interestingly enough, that the court that issued the order, and I'm not trying to say anything bad, or negative, or positive, necessarily about Moms for Liberty, but the court that issued the order was not the court that was handling the case that Moms for Liberty was involved in. That case was out of Kansas, and the case here came out, the order here came out of a court from Kentucky. Although, I will say, I think Moms for Liberty joining the Kansas suit at the time in which it did back in the summer, I think, and having members helped make your decision real easy on what you wanted to do, at least while that temporary stay was in place. I would agree with that.
Mr. Sloan, any other comments? Does anyone else want to make a comment or a question for our lawyer? Mr. Kupinik?
Ms. Shatley, with this ruling, can the school district, can a school district force an employee or a student to refer to another student or employee name or other pronoun? Can the school district force them to do that?
So ultimately, that was, I think, part of the reasoning behind the court's decision in the Kentucky case. Now, I don't know if we've ever had that instance here where we've ever attempted to force anybody to do that anyway. I don't think we would ever force anybody, but certainly, I think what the court indicated was that there were certain First Amendment implications in that regard. And so I think when we come to those kinds of situations, I think we try to find a solution that's appropriate for everybody. I don't feel like it would be right to force anybody in that kind of setting to make those sorts of, to make those sorts of decisions for them on their own behalf, but certainly, you know, there are other pending cases that have went both directions on that, but it seemed pretty much, I think, from the Kentucky case, that that was certainly on the forethought of the judge's mind when he was issuing his opinion.
Mr. Kupinik, do you have any other comments? I have no other, I don't have any comments except to say, I know it didn't affect us here, but it did affect some universities that I'm affiliated with, so it'd be interesting to see how it works going forward for those places. Okay? Thank you. So next, we have public comment, and we have four on the list for public comment, and I'll just go ahead and read the statement on public comment. Public comment period is for members of the public to share their viewpoints with the board. All speakers will state if they are resident of Iredelle County, and if they're a parent or guardian of a student in the school system. The board does not respond to individuals who address the board except to provide or request clarification. And I think that should be, as chair, I really don't think we should do that. We should respect all members that are giving information and not, and see that after the fact, but not during the meeting. If there are a large number of speakers, board may require the designation of a spokesman for each group or persons supporting or opposing the same position. Complaints involving individual personnel or student matters are generally confidential and are not appropriate for the public comment session, and yet should be reported, and should be reported to the superintendent. Disruptions by any person or persons, and public members subject to action in court with the general statute 143-38.17. Also, per policy, the things that are commented on need to be within the purview of Iredelle State's full school system, and that's important to do. So when you have public comment, speak about something, want to speak about an issue, talk about how it affects the Iredelle State's full school system. We need to do that, because we can only do things related to our system. We can't do things related to schools and places that are outside Iredelle State's full schools. And so I think that's a reasonable part of that policy. So first off, we have, so the speakers will have three minutes, according to our policy, since it's one to 10 speakers, and first up is Paula Mimna.
Hello. My name is Paula Mimna. I live in Iredelle County. I was a primary teacher for 20 years. Today, I'd like to speak about the issue that you have talked about earlier this evening that's affecting children attending Iredelle County public schools. I was concerned to learn recently that 13 out of the 36 schools in Iredelle District are not reaching appropriate academic standards with respect to student performance. I congratulate Anita Kern and Mike Kupinik for bringing it to our attention last week at the Cal meeting. It is especially concerning that six out of the 13 underperforming schools were in lower minority than state average. And last Monday, the board chair mentioned the meeting on January 27th to discuss the restart programs for underperforming schools. I was not aware until recently that non-certified teachers were employed in Iredelle State's full schools. The NCDPI states that at least 50% of the teachers must be certified. This was shocking to me. If the lack of certification is due to lower salary offered here, that is a complicated problem that cannot be easily solved at the local level. I called three county commissioners today. I was able to speak with one, that was Scotty Brown. He said he has two principals and two teachers in his family, and they all agree that discipline is an issue. It has deteriorated in the last several years. Is discipline something that could be discussed at your meeting on January 27th? As a retired teacher, I know the importance of structure and discipline in the classroom. It's impossible to teach children without it. Now, Doug Knight, you mentioned that questions about low student performance could be discussed at a restart meeting, as we said, January 27th. Is the public invited to this meeting? I would be very interested in attending a meeting to discuss improving student academic performance. When you all are talking about programs, we don't really see all the details of what you're talking about. You'll just talk about a topic, and so it would be really good to understand more about, you know, exactly what you're talking about with remediation. Now, Dr. James mentioned that lower teacher pay was a cause of the low student performance. I asked Scotty Brown if the commissioners could stipulate funding specifically for teacher salaries. He said teacher salaries come through the state funding. He said commissioners provide funding for school buildings. He said according to, and according to Scotty Brown, he said they would need extra taxes raised specifically for teacher salaries in Iredelle State's full schools, and this is how Morrisville teacher salaries were raised. In the meantime, are you interested in what techniques for instruction were used by Johnson County public schools after they moved their performance levels up from 14 low-performing schools in 2020 to just one school in 2024? What are your plans for improving student performance in Iredelle State's full schools?
Ms. Mimna, thank you. Your time's up, ma'am.
Okay, and when we make it public?
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Ms. Kelly Harris.
Good evening, Iredelle State's full school board, and Dr. Jeff James. My intentions here tonight were to come and to welcome two new board members, so welcome Mr. Angel and Mr. Hoke, and to congratulate Ms. Trent on your vice chair position, and Dr. Knight on your chairman position. Wow, it's been a long time of coming here to board meetings, and I really appreciate how far we've come. Pretty exciting to celebrate the Title IX decision here tonight. I didn't even know that that was on the agenda, so it was great to hear Moms for Liberty, you know, given a little bit of a pat on the back. We really do have a lot of work to do, but we're new at this. We're all learning as we go. And so as I come and to welcome new board members, and to just come back and say Happy New Year 2025, I want to remind you all that our mission, Moms for Liberty, is to educate, empower, and unify our community to defend parental rights at all levels of government, where moms, dads, grandparents, aunts, and uncles, and friends who are dedicated to the survival of America, because we know that what is taught in America's classroom steers the future of America. So with that in mind, I hope that there's mutual respect. I hope that we can learn how to be helpers. That's always been my intention, but it's been a long time learning how to be a leader of an organization. I'm also a part now of the Legislative Committee, because we've grown to 26 chapters in North Carolina, so now we come up with an agenda.
Try to get this related to local schools.
Oh, well, it is.
That's the thing. I need to hear it.
Here it comes. Ready? Okay. So as we're on a legislative agenda, we can talk about things such as getting that teacher pay for right here in Iredelle County schools, right? We can talk about things like, in my meetings, I can try to encourage people to come and tutor, because that sounds like a need that you guys have here in Iredelle State's full schools. So that's my goal, to work together, to say hello, and I hope we're off to a great start for 2025. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next, we have Jean Foster.
Good evening, Dr. Knight, members of the board, Dr. James. I am Jean Foster. I'm an Iredelle County resident and the parent of two children in ISS. One of them is at East Elementary. This is Hawkinson. On Thursday, December the 19th, East had Academic Day, and that is a day where we, our students invite outside guests to come in, and they do fun activities with them, but they also show off their leadership notebooks. And those notebooks have their goals, they have their growth, they have all sorts of achievements that they've had throughout the semester. We do two of those types of events each year, one in the fall and one in the spring, and that's part of our accreditation as a lighthouse leadership school. And this year, we, in all years, we have students who do not have outside representation. And this year, I sent an email out on the Monday before, so three days before, to a number of community organizations, to the board, and to the administrative staff, asking you to volunteer to come and help out with that. And I want to recognize some folks who did that. I will undoubtedly leave out a couple individuals, and I apologize for that. I wasn't there the whole day. But I know that Mr. Sloan and Mr. Kupinik were there that day. Mr. Ribbick and Ms. Reed were there from the administrative staff. Kim Wasson was there from city council. We had more than 30 people sign up for that to come out and help us in just those three days that we had the email out. Most of those came from Speak Life Live here in the community, so I want to thank you all for that. It makes a real difference for those kids who have parents that are working and aren't able to come out. Also, in December, I reached out to Ms. Trent as the representative of the board to help us, if she could, with celebrating our teachers before the holiday. And she, as she always does when I call out to her, she helped us find some money to sponsor a lunch for them, both working with the community and individually helped us. We also had, you were speaking about churches and their involvement earlier. Landmark Church, First Greater Living Missionary Baptist Church, Broad Street United Methodist, and Grace Baptist all contributed to that. What you do in the schools makes such a huge difference, and I just want to thank you for your participation.
Thank you very much. Does she want to say something?
He.
He, I'm sorry. He want to say something? Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. All right, last, we have Lisa Bullis.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Bullis. I live in Iredelle County. My children do not live in Iredelle County. I'm here, well, I'm so excited that you all care so much about the children learning, and I'm here to offer hope for children that want to learn to read, and they want to learn to read on grade level. I graduated from our neighboring county, Mecklenburg County. I graduated high school, at Olympic High School. I went on to the University of South Carolina, and earned my bachelor's in journalism. I have a minor in writing, and I majored in advertising and public relations. I learned to read in first grade at Montclair Elementary School in Charlotte. We sat at big tables with our teacher, and I remember what the books were like, maybe you do, too. They were like See Spark Run. And this worked, and I think a lot of different things could work to help children to learn to read. I want to tell you what worked for me and for my child in the 1990s. We lived in another state, and summer had ended, and my son was not old enough yet to go to kindergarten, so we started our school at home. A book was recommended to me, How to Teach Your Child to Read in a Hundred Easy Lessons. The book has been updated and is still available. I recently bought a copy from Amazon for about $17, and I haven't reviewed the new version yet, but my 1990s copy worked great. It was a great success. We spent about 15 or 20 minutes every day for 100 days, me and my son, and we started with three-letter words like pop and mop, and then we added the long vowel sounds, and then two-syllable words and three. Well, then we moved on to sentences and paragraphs. Well, by the end of the 100 lessons, he could read pages. He could read stories that were several pages long. All with 100 lessons, 15 minutes a day. So I think anybody that wants to learn to read can. Teachers can help the students, parents can help their children. Some of the children might can even help their parents to learn to read. The big thing is that we just need to know that we can do this. Tutors can help. Um, the big thing is that we just need to know that we can do this. Tutors can help. Um, our pastors encouraged us to choose a word for each year. My word for this year is happy. Happy is the man who finds wisdom and the man who gains understanding. Reading can open so many doors for us. Once we learn to read, then we can, we can read the the grocery store ad, the job application, menus and maps, the Bible, the gospel, our constitution, and the Declaration of Independence. Once we know how to read, then we can learn to write, and we can encourage other people to read and to write. Anyone can learn to read. We can bring hope to our world, and our world needs hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bullis. And that is all we have today for public comment. And last on the agenda is the superintendent comments. So Dr. Jeff James, floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. The first thing I want to speak to uh is DACI, D A C I, which is the Drug and Alcohol Coalition of Iredell. Uh, on February eighteenth, State's Full Civic Center, which lasts all day, lunches provided. They are doing a community forum. Um, this is another community agency that talks about tobacco, vaping, fentanyl, and um I'll talk to them and see if they're actually going to do one also at night because I understand that's a quagmire for people that work for shift. But their goal is to educate our community on all the things that could go on with our teenagers. And this is a group of people that uh work with our teenagers, so I can assure you that you will learn something as a parent if you can attend. And I will work with that group to see if maybe we can do one in the evening. Uh, possibly host it here, but I do know that Ms. or Dr. Savage is actually working with our student support team. Uh, and Be Well, Iredell is part of the um United Way Campaign, and I'm on their executive board. Uh, and I know the concern is is coordinating efforts as a county instead of people solo doing things. We can accomplish much more. So one of the, one of the things we want to do is a community forum, again, on uh mental health issues that that we experience as a school system, the community experiences, and how to connect individuals to help. Uh, my wife, believe it or not, received a phone call last night. We were able to direct them to uh my sister's house for support. Um, so there, there's a lot of things that, you know, if you didn't grow up in poverty, if you don't know all of the county, there are things that our kids deal with that you would, you would be amazed at their resilience to spring back and actually perform at school. Um, the other thing, I do appreciate all the hard work our teachers do, and I know we talk a lot, and I and I would like to say that we're in support of what helps you in the classroom. Um, and Johnson County's been brought up, and all these guys are my colleagues. So I really hate talking about any particular county, but you need trend data. So two thousand twenty-three, we were in the top twenty-five percent in the state. Johnson County was not. Their math proficiency was seventy-five percent, third grade reading proficiency forty-two. High school graduation rate, uh, that looks pretty good, so I give them kudos there. But you can't look at one year. Uh, the system we use, E V O S, there's a ton of data out there. If you want to research it, it is a value-add system. It's not made for human beings. It's made for cattle and seed and anything you control the input. We get, we take what parents give us, they send us their best. And they all come from different backgrounds. Poverty is not poverty is not poverty. Inner-city poverty is different than rural poverty. There are a million things in statistics that matter when you look at data. And once again, I'm going to tell you, North Carolina is one of about four states that holds on to a model that you have to exceed growth to come out of low performing. So if you recall, Iredell County made a decision to come back to school for the first district in the state. Out of COVID, we made a decision to come back. We were number one in the state when it come to growth. That growth is part of our target growth. It didn't go away. We didn't get credit for it. The state basically said we're null and void for all data. But the model we use includes all historical data. So unfortunately, I wouldn't do it, but if we really wanted these schools to turn around, we would tell them not to teach anything for two years, and our scores would be completely horrible. Then the the year we started back teaching, our growth would be exponential, and we'd come out of low performing. That's how stupid the model is. We done what was right for kids in our county. We heard it loud and clear from the community. We want to go back to school. That's what we done. Again, number one in the state with growth, two thousand twenty-one data. So it's there. So if you look at our data historically, we're in the top twenty-five percent always. Not saying we can't do better, and we would love to. We would love for someone to advocate. And if you look at Johnson's funding, they're ninetieth in the state. We're ninety-eighth, ninety-ninth every year. So Johnson is sort of like us when it comes to funding. Um, and it's not that we're asking a plethora of money or to throw good money after bad. But money does impact things, and Ms. Mimna hit the nail on the head. Doesn't really matter if you're a faith-based school, if you're a charter school, if you're a private school, or you're a public school. The quality of teacher matters for our kids. Our future is being trained right going into next year or going into this year by the lowest-paid people when you look at state. So I will also give you salaries for all the positions in the state on the twenty-seventh, and teachers are at the very bottom. Uh, prison guards, uh, because they require training. Our teachers are licensed individuals, like a doctor, like a dentist, like a lawyer. Uh, you have to have a license. And so when you compare all that, teachers are paid at the very bottom. So you can become, don't, teachers, please don't leave to be prison guards. So you can leave us and actually get a pay raise going to be a prison guard. So I'm not telling you to do that, but we have got to change the attitude about our future in this state. We're doing very well economically, but I can assure you, continue to undercut the mainstay of our society, our public schools, charter schools, all of us are need to pay our teachers um a decent salary. And so Best NC, if you want to go look up that website, is a conglomerate of companies in North Carolina that have said this, had lobbied this at the state for many, many years. And I think Mr. Kubik and I might have ended up two years ago in one of their sessions. They were even advocating two years ago, minimum salary of fifty-eight thousand dollars for teachers. Uh, you'll hear a lot of numbers thrown around from the General Assembly. They'll use fifty-two thousand. That's when you add the local supplement. So Ms. Mimna, we do take money from the commissioners and pay a local supplement. But a county like Wake is so um so far up on economics with their their powerhouse. So they start out teachers at eighteen percent local incentive, up to twenty-eight percent. Ours is about ten. When I got back here five years ago, it was around six point two five, the board. And I have vehemently tried every way possible to cut expenses, cutting central office staff, taking that money, putting it out in teacher supplement. We're up to about ten and a half percent for teachers. Um, our classified people do get a supplement that's higher typically than than anyone around us. So it's hard to attract help, but um that's where we're at. Unfortunately, we're in a labor shortage, and it's ever who pays the most who's typically getting people. Uh, we done away with our our teacher prep programs years back. Now we brought them back in, but we're it's taken a while to get traction to encourage students to go in to a profession they're not going to make a ton of money in. And uh, there's a lot of that data that I'll share again in the twenty-seventh. Uh, that is a public meeting. So uh, Chairman, that's all I have. I do appreciate all the hard work that our community does to, for our kids. They are our future, no matter what school you're in, private, public, charter, faith. Uh, these are, this is our future, and I I think we owe it to our kids to fund them to the point that we're preparing them to make sure that when we retire, uh, we we have good, um, we have people in positions that are doing a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Actually, as a professor, I actually teach now, last semester and this semester, I'm teaching a course um entitled, um, basically, it's a science one-ten course, basically uh, physical science for early elementary education majors. Um, there's not as many education majors in there as there should. There's not as many as they should. And I took that course on just so I could try to teach them how to teach. And there's not, it's it's disheartening at times because there's not as many education majors in that course. There's other majors, of course, but there's not as many education majors as they should be. And they're, that, it's frustrating. And um, and I talked to them and asked them, money is part of it. Um, but you've got to, it it's not considered a, it doesn't have the cachet it had when I was coming through school. It was considered a very
Yes, we villainize it. We villainize teaching, so no one wants to go into it. And for the board, uh, and the rest of the listening audiences, we are going to make a three-hour delay tomorrow. So we're going to make that call soon. You're the first to know.
All right. Um, I do want to say things can get better, and I think there's, I think we're getting better. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can, and we're going to hopefully get some plans to help make it better at what little we can, we can do ourselves. Uh, January twenty-seventh, under announcements is uh, we're going to be doing a year-end review and talk about goals, and that will be open to the public, but it won't be the comments. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's no comments. This is basically us.
The Unity Center?
Unity Center. So we'll, we have a tight agenda. Uh, it'll be, we'll be lucky to get through it, but yes. So we'll be breaking up in strategic goal teams and talking about where we're at, what our goal was, and what we've got to do to close it. Yes.
And so I just want to let the public know that that will be it, since it is a quorum, that is an announced meeting.
Yes, and we will have an agenda. Of course, we didn't get it out today, but we'll have an agenda coming out, uh, should be after tomorrow.
Point of information?
Yes, sir.
How would the public, um, how would the public be involved in that meeting? Last year, we split up into groups and went to each session. Would the public be split up and go with a group? Because that seemed like that would.
Yes, well, the the purpose of it is to inform the board, but any public that wants to come, but small group questions, of course. Uh, as a board member, you'd be sitting in a group of people asking questions, but we're there to answer questions. So yes.
Okay. Um, also, our next meeting is on February third, committee, the whole meeting, closed session. We have four, regular meeting at six. And outside of that, um, going forward, I don't see anything much there. We do have a early release day for the early colleges. And January twentieth is a holiday for Martin Luther King Day. And that's for all our traditional MB Mills and the early colleges. So that's all I have. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? We have a second. What I have heard, learned today is there is no discussion on a motion to adjourn, so we've had a motion. So to adjourn, we have a second, so we'll call the vote. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to adjourning, say no.